Ready?
Yes.
She's gonna kill us.
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, March 5th, 2014 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Arancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski. All please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Mr. President, I would that we remember all of those in our community that are less fortunate than we are in any and every way, and also we remember those who have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers, and take up a point of privilege and ask for us to think about and pray for my family in particular. My mother's sister passed last week, very, very close knit family, and so it's been a challenging time in our family, so we appreciate your prayers and thoughts as well. Finally, we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval minutes from the meeting of February 19th, 2014, and bills for payment on March 7th and 14th, 2014. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Arancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.
Do we have any requests for repository sales? Any requests for repository sales? Any requests for repository sales? Hearing none, citizens to be heard. Mr. Randy Barnes did call in.
Good morning, Council President, Council members, Mayor's staff, administration. Those guests are joining us electronically. And one thing, I always email. I'm not so sure that staff in there likes just phone calls, so I suggest anyone who wants to be on the agenda to email or send something. What have you done for me lately? You ever work for someone that asks you that? Well, guess what? You as council members do. You work for the public. While the public may not stand here twice a month and ask you, it's in their minds, what has council done for the citizens lately? Public knows you unanimously passed a budget two months ago and then changed your mind last meeting about it. We know you spent quite a bit of time thinking about how to collect that 10 years' worth of garbage fees. Problem with that is there's a statute of limitations on those kind of bills. It's either four or six years, so you might as well write off that debt unless you place liens on someone's home. If you're expecting to collect debt that's eight, nine, 10 years old, there's a law against that. You can't collect that debt. So you can write off a lot of that debt. Of course, council spent quite a bit of time talking about when citizens to be heard should be heard. Is it the beginning? Is it the end? Maybe it ought to be both. That way, if you have something to talk about on the agenda, you speak five minutes beginning. Then if you want to speak about something that's not on the agenda, you speak for five minutes at the end. I think that's a great compromise. You double the amount of time that citizens to be heard could be heard. What have you done for me lately? Citizens want to ask. What about showing support to those that want to bring development to the city? I guess council's been too busy to pay attention to an elected state representative that's of the same party that wants to find a city of Erie solution to a proposed intermodal rail yard. Why has council not written and unanimously passed a resolution supporting Mr. Harkins' effort? That may not be successful, but at least council as seven elected Democrats could show a fellow party member. But then again, maybe "party" doesn't mean all that much to council members. Isn't that a solution to increase in revenue? Does the city need more revenue? Of course they do. How much shovel-ready land does the city need to have before economic development will take place? There'll be a lot more in the future as soon as the southwest side of 12th and Green Garden is bulldozed. We'll have a lot of shovel-ready land at 12th and Green Garden, both sides, north and south. Or like the land between Peach and State, south of 12th Street, plenty of shovel-ready land there. What about the Savakio Business Park? Plenty of shovel-ready land there. How about that vast acreage on East Lake Road? Used to be International Paper Hamlet. Plenty of shovel-ready land there, isn't there? Does council get it? Does council want economic development? Do they want to increase their revenues in the city, or do they want to sit around and twiddle their thumbs and worry about collecting garbage bills that are eight years old? Let's talk about something on the agenda for just a moment. Purchase orders. Every week, there's bills on the agenda for council to discuss and approve, but this week it's about $50,000. You think a year from now it's going to be less? I doubt it. But the ways to pay those bills, to help pay those bills, is creative, create economic solutions and spur economic development in Erie. I suppose council can sit back and say, "Well, that's not our job. That's handled by another department in City Hall." But didn't all of you pledge to work for the citizens? You want to step outside the box once in a while and maybe do something for the citizens? Maybe get creative? Maybe stand behind an electric representative that represents half the city and the state and say, "You know what? We support you. We want to see that work. We'll try to work with you, Representative Harkins, and try to find a solution in the city, if there is one." I think that's all I have today. I really appreciate your time, and you have a great afternoon and the rest of the day.
Thank you, sir. Citizens to be heard.
Morning, council.
Morning.
My name is McDonald. Property of 19th and Reed. First thing I want to bring your attention to, look like I'm the only one seeing this. There's a vehicle over there on 17th and Parade. The three brothers that are two brothers, some kind of brothers have got it. And am I the only one seeing this? It's a, it's gonna kill somebody's kids. That thing's been sitting up there for two years. It ain't nobody said nothing about it. Them foreigners could come in here and do anything they want to do. We paved the way for them. We paid the bills for them. You get that bond grant money, we don't see none of that, you do what you want to do with it. My understanding has always been that that money was to help the peoples that didn't have nothing, help them fix their homes up and that, but you never address that. One of these days, you're gonna be in a position, you're not gonna always be fortunate as you are. You're gonna be down in the trenches with us. You'll see things different then. I want, I want you to get over there and look at that. You're supposed to be up there for us? You're not. You're up there for Joe. Anything Joe want, y'all jump to it. Joe didn't vote for you. The public voted for you. Taxpaying citizens voted for you. And I'm looking at, I belong to the AARP, or whatever you want to call it. The Republicans down there and them Democrat Republicans down in Washington, D.C., they want to take more of our money. They're using some of our Social Security money to pay the budget, but now they want some more. You know, I've found this out in the years that I've been here on this earth. If you let somebody kick you in the butt and you don't turn around and square back at them, they'll keep kicking you in the butt. I knew a while back the president wanted to give the unemployment, unemployed peoples that was on, was drawing that money, unemployment, Republicans rebelled against that. Poor peoples are who keep the economy going. They spend money. We can't put our money in the bank like that rich dude can. He just keeps stacking it up in the bank. You look at the price of gas, the way gas been going up. Now, that's a sin before God. I remember when gas was 19 cents a gallon. Now it's going towards $4. I can understand why the Bible says, "A rich man will never enter the kingdom of heaven." A camel will, it would be easy for a camel to go through the ivy and needle than a rich man enters the kingdom of heaven. And that sound good to me, 'cause we catching hell down here with the rich man and them that trying to be rich. You, there's no compassion. Y'all don't even have no compassion up there. I, I don't understand y'all. What are you up there for? You ain't doing nothing for us, just like Randy said. What have you done for, you ain't, you ain't did nothing for us. You're doing things for Joe. You give him that raise, which he don't, he didn't, far as I'm concerned, he didn't deserve that $60,000 or $65,000 he getting. We just, he come down here every once in a while, he won't even stay and talk to us. Anybody that's too good to talk to the hand that's feeding them don't deserve to be a so-called public servant. You don't think you're a public servant, you think you're kings and queens. You're public servants. People are scared to come down here and talk to y'all. They crazy as I don't know, and send it home. They, they gotta be out of their mind. They expect you want to give them a, even come, even with the board, they got to be down below. You know better than they are. Them peoples down there in Washington, D.C., you congressmen and that. I've been trying to see Keller, Kelly, or whatever his name, for about two years. He too good to come, to, 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 uh, talk to me, but now he wants to run again. Anybody that run, both of him is out of their cotton-picking head because they don't have a mind. Your public official should be, the public should be able to talk to the public official. You don't know everything. You, you, you should have town meetings, see what the peoples think, and then you could run the government better. Because what you're putting out there, they don't want it all the time. It's not good for them. And if you put something out there, it ain't good for them. That garbage flea, it had no business getting like that if you'd have been doing your job. And if the mayor would have been doing his job, though, not only Joe, them before him, peoples getting away, and then you're gonna sit the bill on us. Up fees, up fees. That's all Joe knows, oh, up fees, up fees. Get out there and collect what's due. Why should we walk around carrying all that weight on our back? It doesn't make sense to me, and it shouldn't make sense to y'all.
Bell rang.
You should be better men and women than that. You have no compassion for us, but it's come back to haunt you one day.
Thank you, sir.
I don't want to sound angry, but you should get angry.
My name is Bonnie Markley. Again, I'm from 1020 Cascade Street, Erie, Pennsylvania, 16502, and I'm not as eloquent as the speakers before me, for sure, or as professional, or probably the ones to follow, but I'm gonna keep this brief. I made some notes that I'm gonna start from the back to the front, but I want to say good morning to council and citizens, and I'm not as eloquent, but I'd like to know also why the mayor of the city of Erie is never present at city council meetings. I did occasionally hear him on 1400 at 8:30 in the morning a couple weeks ago, but I would like to see him here present at council meetings so we can probably pick his brain and see how smart he is. Secondly, another thing, why are there over 4,000 properties value in the billions of dollars on the tax-exempt rolls, including religious institutions, to name a few, Port Authority, school buildings, private residence? In other words, I went past one small home at 1117 West 4th Street two weeks ago, named Glenn Baker. Only thing significant about the little teeny house was there were two very large satellite dishes on the roof. Why are private citizens tax-exempt? I would like to be. And why aren't, why are the nonprofit corporations tax-exempt? They make more money, the schools, the colleges, Gann and Mercyhurst, they make a lot more money than I do, and they keep their buildings beautiful, and I wonder if they pay their garbage and sewer fees? And why can't these be published in local newspapers? I even had the pleasure of calling, what is his name, Kevin Flowers, about two, three weeks ago, and asked him this question. I've not had a return phone call. It should be published in the local news so all citizens can know the loss of revenue to the city budget. Taxes, taxpayers aren't coming to meetings like this because they figure it's not worth it, but all properties should be taxed, not the PILOT payment in lieu of taxes. Now I'm gonna go back to what I really wanted to talk about. As Mr. Barnes, I believe, was, is so eloquent, the garbage fees, the water fees, I understood Joe Senate, our mayor, saying on talk radio, 1400, they are not going to be rescinded in 2014. It's a given forever. We're gonna have the fees go up and up and up, and senior citizens do not have as much money as you, and I know people that are in professional don't pay their garbage bills, but I do. I'm gonna pay mine today, whatever. Might not eat a couple meals, but I'll pay my bills. And why hasn't council, I'm saying what they have said, why has not council found a way in all these years to figure out how to collect pass-through bills? I have some ideas. Tried to get to the website for delinquent bills. I didn't know if it was still up. That's how I got to the, the 4,000 tax-exempt properties, which are billions of dollars of value. Do an ordinance. Make everybody pay taxes. That would be pleasant. And a few other things here. I noticed a few weeks ago, they were talking about installing or putting a budget for $10,000 to install security systems at the streets or garbage, whatever department that had been ripped off by city employees, theft. So why $10,000 has it put out for bid? Has it been put out for bid? Or why can't the idle employees on their downtime run up to Harbor Freight and, and buy these security systems like I installed in my house, at my expense? You know, looking at all, like you say, reiterating what the other gentleman have said, how are we going to pay for all this? You're raising taxes, city, county, state, and your governor is doing illegal things. I mean, it's just getting, government sucks. It really does. Why can't you get it together and be a person that is on a normal income, that has to pay their bills and do pay their bills? Please, consider not raising any more fees. Enjoy your salaries. I don't know what they are. I'd still like to get a copy of the budget, but I actually came just to say goodbye to Jim Clem. Thank you for your time. It's bed plus.
And I'll stick that until the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning, everybody. My name's John Wayle. I live at 447 Gordon Lane in the city of Erie. I'm gonna talk about a number of things today. Five minutes probably won't cover it, and they're all gonna be on the agenda. And one I just wrote down, I'm gonna start with B, silent meditation. Silent meditation is silence, so we can all do what we want to do, pray to who we want to pray to or not pray. I don't know if public prayer is on the agenda. Silent meditation be agreeable to everybody. So you're gonna pass, for final passage, the citizens to be heard, file ordinance 12-2014. In the past six years, council has moved from four meetings a month to two. You've reduced the time that people can talk down to five minutes. You've outlawed, you passed a law about props, hats, prop signs, and now you want to move the speakers to the back of the line. There's a couple sayings that come to mind. Rearranging the chairs on the Titanic. Nero fiddled while Rome burned. Pass an ordinance about collecting overdue garbage bills. Pass an ordinance that means something to our lives. We're wasting a lot of time on when people talk, who talks. If you want people to stop talking and you want these guys to stop coming, do your job. They will then come down and say, "I wish I had something to complain about. You guys are awesome. I'll stop coming. Thanks. Thanks for taking care of this city." You're not doing that. So do you have things you could take care of? The garbage and sewer fees. You voted unanimously to pass the budget, and three people said, "That's not a great idea. We're gonna agree with Joe Senate, and we're gonna outlaw the sunset clause." So Kaz, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Mersky, you've had two weeks now. What are your plans? What are your concrete plans to take care of this? You said that the sunset clause was not a good idea. It's the worst idea. So what's your idea? Let's hear it. You've had two weeks. Every week I listen, I read the minutes, I wait at the end for council, for your committee reports, and every week it's, "I don't have anything. I've got a meeting tomorrow. Hey, happy birthday to my sister." Those aren't committee reports. You've got jobs to do. You get paid. You get almost free insurance. You all stepped up and asked to have this job, so do something. It's a common theme now. The first two people have said it. Do something. We'll stop complaining. Crime is rampant. You could do something about crime. Now, you might say, "John, how do you know crime's rampant?" Because in February, you passed purchase orders for $21,000 for ammunition, rifles, sniper training, ballistic face shields, tasers. Wow. What is going on in this city? Do something about it. Let's not worry about when people talk, what kind of hat they wear, what they say. Let's do something. You're the council, you're like the board of directors of a corporation. You set the tone for what the managers do. Set the tone, and the managers, fifth floor, do it. You run this city. Do something about it. Take $20,000 and give it to Second Harvest Food Bank instead of buying bullets. Maybe they'll feed some kids, maybe do an after-school program, maybe the city'll be a little nicer place to live. Speaking of purchasing, $35,000 on the budget this week, none of it spent in town. You need a new tractor for a golf course or something. Gerlacs love to sell you one. Miller Brothers up the street would love to sell you one. Probably e-government, you probably put that on the website, you put it out to bid like you're supposed to. You made a concerted effort to attract local businesses. So I went to the website, and the only thing up there for e-purchasing are police uniforms from 2006, Harley-Davidson's from 2009. Four people work in IT. You paid them $350,000 last year. Put the stuff online. We were promised in December a searchable database of delinquent garbage bills. Searchable database, not my words, the mayor's. What we have is a PDF file on the homepage, PDF file. Took about three seconds to do. Put two up there if that's all you can muster, but sort one by amount owed, so then we can easily look at and go, "Oh, this guy owes $23,000." But searchable database, what we were promised in February, today we have nothing. Uniforms. We're gonna spend $5,000 at bratware.com. Bratware. It's police uniforms. Northeastern Uniform and Supply moved from Mill Creek into the city of Erie. They bought a building, they pay taxes, they have employees that work in the city of Erie. Go spend $5,000 from them, not in Washington State, at bratware.com. Speaking of, the last thing. Oh, no. I did, I raced through. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, council.
Morning.
Let me introduce myself. My name is Jim Globo. I'm president of the board of CAT TV, and I just wanted to introduce myself. I know that Councilman Curtis Jones is gonna be our liaison, and I just want to extend invitation for us to work a lot closer than in the past. I just give you a little background. I've been a producer for CAT TV since the year 2000, and I'm a producer of one of the shows called The Amazing Grays, and we produced over 650 shows, and a lot of those shows have dealt with issues pertaining to senior citizens, and most of our staff and crew are senior citizens themselves. And the amazing thing is that we've learned a lot by interviewing people who are nonprofits in the community, and those people have services that need to be told to the community. Many people aren't aware of what these services are. So it serves two purposes. First of all, we have nonprofits that don't have a budget to promote themselves and to give, put out the word what they, what services they provide. Secondly, the people who are viewers have the opportunity to find out whether any of those services are valuable to them or their families. So we feel that we do provide a valuable service, and like I said, since the year 2000, we've produced over 650 shows. Tonight, we have a meeting at CAT TV, and basically it's to talk to the community and find out ways we can reinvent ourselves. I know there's been a lot of criticisms or at least comments made about CAT TV, and I'd like any of you to embed on council or anybody in the, in the room here, let me know of any issues that you have with CAT TV so that we can, you know, rectify it or take care of it. But I feel that CAT TV is a valuable service to the community, and I know that some of the program may be irritating to some people, but the only way we can find out what is irritating to you is to, for you to let us know what you think we can do to make a better organization. So together, let us make an effort to make the community a better place. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, council.
Morning.
I'm Kurt Solman. I'm a citizen here in Erie, and I also serve on the board of CAT TV. Jim and I came here basically to remind you that, you know, CAT TV is a regional asset, community asset, to help communicate with the community. There's a lot of, when you look at the statistics, there's a lot of people that don't have internet service at their home, and they do rely, especially the elder, elderly rely on CAT TV to get local information. You may say there's no need for CAT TV. You know, QLN is doing a good, good job. They have three stations now. But what CAT TV is really strong in is incubating producers. Last month, I talked to DJ, our technical person at CAT. They run their organization on two people now. Recently, the executive director resigned because of health reasons, and that's forced us, the, the board, to step up. And what we've done is we've expanded the board to 15 members and to incorporate more of the membership. This can allow more input, and the board to really step up and, and do what you're asking us to do is raise funds. But, you know, all we're asking is, you know, an open line of communication and some understanding. You know, for years, CAT TV got the money directly from cable access television, and, you know, it was kind of the gravy train, and those days are over, I understand, but at the same time, all the money just shouldn't be cut off, and we do appreciate the $75,000 that was put into the budget. You know, it's certainly gonna help us, but at the same time, we realize that we only have enough really functioning capital to stay open for a year unless we raise more money. You know, it costs about 10, about $12,000 a month to keep CAT TV open. So I've stepped out to be chairman of the Sustainability Committee, and we're looking at about 10 different strategies to keep us open, whether it's partnering with QLN in the production end, being kind of a local producer's incubator, doing a lot of the productions downtown, you know, and keeping QLN functioning without, you know, without all the people coming in and out. So, you know, all we're asking, and I, and I know you hear a lot of negative stuff, and you've got some tough skin, I gotta hand it to you. You know, cable TV can be a tool for you, too. If you, there's specific, you know, specific issues that you want to communicate and let people know, there are producers there that are more willing to work with you and, you know, help you get, get your messages out. So I don't want to ramble on anymore, but I just want to thank you, you know, for putting us in the budget and that. You know, we truly are partners in communicating to our region. So is there anything else? we truly are partners in communicating to our region. So is there anything else? Do you have any questions for us at this time?
Not at this time.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard?
I wanted to wait till the end there to make sure that in case this ordinance does change, I was the last one.
Name and address, sir.
My name is Joel Schwartz. Address 502 East 33rd Street. Good morning, counsel. I wanted to, in case the, the meetings get changed to the end of the, or the citizens to be heard section gets changed to the end, I figured I'd make the history books and come up last. So I waited a little bit. I really came up because of the last couple of meetings I was here. I, you know, from, from listening to all the doom and gloom and the constant berating of not only the administration but of the council themselves, it, it just gets tough to take after a while. And having had been on that side, obviously, for a little bit of time, I can certainly understand that, like that gentleman just said, it does take some tough skin to sit up there and, and to remain silent and not to get into a, an argumentative stance after a while, after people say certain things. You know, the, the truth is, we have 100 and, what, 102, 103,000 people that live in this community. And, and there's seven people up on council, you know. And what's that, about 14, 15,000 people a person to take care of, you know, if it came down to that. And, you know, it's, it's a tough job. And I, I give you a lot of kudos for sitting up there and, and doing what you can. I would say, actually, you know, being Ash Wednesday today, it's the, the mark in the beginning of Lent. It's a season of sacrifice and giving. I would really like to make a plea to the community to step up a little bit, too, and to, to help out. Because things are pretty tough out there. And it's not easy for seven people up there to be able to do everything. You know, I mean, we need a change in the community, but it also starts a lot of the times at home. You know, you have an opportunity to help somebody out. Help them out. You know, the, the kids, you're, you're out of money? Grab your brother and go shovel somebody's sidewalk, an elderly person's sidewalk. You know, you see something bad going on in the neighborhood? Tell somebody about it. Clue somebody in. And, you know, it's, it's difficult. And the administration, I mean, they're a godsend since 2008, when we had the market crash. We floated above most of the communities our size. And, you know, I don't have any reason to stand up here and, and, you know, say any, give anybody accolades, because I really don't have any intentions to do anything else. Maybe one day. But the truth is, you know, the mayor is upstairs. He can be reached. His administration is here. He sends his people down here. He's kept us out of hot water for many years. Cities our size, comparable in our size, have, have gone under. In fact, Harrisburg, I think, just now got out of chapter seven or what have you. So, you know, we're doing pretty good. And I think we, we need to not be as harsh on our, on our community leaders and give them a little bit of a leeway to, to do their jobs. You know, and the, and the truth is, you know, a lot of these people are busy. You know, you have a teacher over here. You have an architect. You have a, a blue collar, hardworking man. You have a, a man that works for government and the state. You have a man that works for the church and a historian and a, a great man in the community and a, and a mother of, of kids and, and a husband that works. I mean, they have other jobs to do. And the $6,000 a year that you get for that, you know, yeah, that's nice. But when you, when you put on all their, all the other stressors they have as liaison ships to different departments and, or to authorities, you know, that, that, your time gets thin. And they need some help. And if you can give them the help, most of the people up there, and I know them, they'll answer their phones. I just wanted to come up and, since this was going to be the last time what we could probably, at the beginning of the meeting, air our grievances or talk about social injustices at the beginning. I wanted to say that. One last thing. The east side, I'm really not for the intermodal area on the east side in Lawrence Park, because the, the east side, the east side of Erie and in Lawrence Park have had nothing but the, you know, bad things over the years. You know, they had to breathe the air from Hammermill and General Electric all those years, and now they want to put an intermodal in there. I think the spot, you know, just south of IP, the Hammermill plant, has already got some of the railway already set up in there. Why we, and there's not too much around that area. Things like that. The east side's really had a tough time in the last few years. And I don't really think to, to go down there with the way that things are at General Electric. And let's face it, General Electric and, and our other largest employer in the city are both east side companies. Have them help out a little bit more. You know, the people on the east side don't get anything. And these huge companies are, are making all the profits, Erie Insurance and, and General Electric. There's no reason why they can't put funding back into their community. That's the community that they're in, the east side. Alls I can say is, we should, we should start working together and, and stop berating each other. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Eerie None, Mrs. Robey.
Ordinances for final passage. Counsel File 15866, official ordinance number 12, 2014, is pulled by City Council. Counsel File Number 15867, official ordinance number 13, 2014, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $15,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof federal forfeiture program. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. That Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15867, now known as Official File Ordinance Number 13 of 2014, be finally passed by the City Council. Counsel File Number 15868, official ordinance number 14, 2014, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $10,000 from unanticipated and unappropriated revenue in the City of Erie Capital Fund. This amount represents a donation from the Star Athletic Club for the purchase of capital assets in the Police Department. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. That Council File Bill Number 15868, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 14, 2014, be finally passed by the City Council. New business.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Jones.
Move the balance of the agenda. Second. It moved in second.
Any separations? Okay, voting on the balance of the agenda. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. President, we have a wave rules resolution. This is for a police hire who will be sworn in tomorrow and was just misplaced by the administration and brought down late yesterday afternoon. Voting on the wave rules, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. Resolution sponsored by Mr. Kwiatowski and seconded by Mr. Mersky. That Anastasia Stewart. Okay, there, there are three names on the resolution. Number one will be the appointed officer. The, the above three names as the appear on the current civil service eligibility list for police officers. Be it resolved that Anastasia Stewart, 201 Dunn Boulevard, number one, on list, having been nominated by Chief Randy Bowers, is hereby appointed as a probationary patrolman at the current salary of $38,466.45, and that he is on probation from one year from his date of appointment. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you. We can start with Councilman Mersky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things. I attended the Convention Center Authority meeting. They are moving forward with the GAF property. They've hired Kidder Walker as the lead architect on the GAF property. They also passed a motion at that meeting supporting our application for improvements to the Jaria Ballpark in that, our cap money that we submitted to the state for an application. I also attended Neighborhood Watch. And just from Neighborhood Watch, a couple of things. I went to the Mercyhurst Neighborhood Watch area. They had the CERT team there, Community Emergency Response Team spoke. The CERT program is an excellent volunteer program that basically has citizens helping law enforcement and public safety and, in emergency response. And I encourage anyone who's interested in that to contact the County Office of Emergency Management. And they will assist you in getting started with that. They've had such a good response that they're actually having an extra class this year due to the demand for people wanting to help out. And I think that's a good thing. Also from Neighborhood Watch, United Way Day of Caring is coming up April 19th. Applications by Neighborhood Watch groups are due by the middle of March on, if you want that funding from the United Way for Day of Caring. And tonight, Mr. Brennan and I have a meeting with Burton Deal Neighborhood Watch Group to talk about the McClellan Park project and the, the two projects that we're working on right now up there. The Dog Park, which they have secured funding for, and then Mr. Brennan's working on a pavilion with GE volunteers. So those are some of the things we're working on with Neighborhood Watch. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple items from my liaison committees. For the Erie Zoo, they successfully opened this past week. There, as I mentioned it last time, they bid out the Lyon renovation project as one of their projects come up this summer. And they're going to be starting that as soon as the weather breaks here. For the Port Authority, they are currently working, if anyone's ever seen the activity down there, on that dock wall reconstruction that is next to their, their administration building and, in between there and the Don John facility. So that's going to be happening this summer and hopefully be wrapped up by 40 on the summer. Also, Port Authority's making preparations for the summer activities and events. A lot of activities coming up. A lot of things are going to be going on. They're also making repairs to the McAllister Marine Building. I know those were kind of on hold temporarily because they were accepting proposals from developers for McAllister Place. It's currently on hold. And we'll see what happens there as the time comes on. Also, I attended the Robbins Blasco Neighborhood Watch meeting. I spoke at their monthly meeting this past Wednesday. We discussed city services, property maintenance issues, neighborhood beautification efforts. And their, their group is really, really involved in a lot of, a lot of activities. And especially this summer, there's, there's a lot planned. And also, they have plans to renovate Pebble Park, which is the park in their neighborhood. And, you know, of course, there's issues with finance. And they're looking to raise some, raise some dollars to, to help out with that park, to make their neighborhood even better. That's it, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Councilman Winarsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, everyone, once again. Did attend the EMTA meeting this past month. Not much to report on there until the weather breaks. They really want to move forward with Phase Two of their project. And we'll definitely give updates as needed as progress progresses. We also did attend the Neighborhood Watch at the Blasco Library. That's a watch meeting that all the different Neighborhood Watches come down to attend. The Chief Bowers was there, as long as District Attorney De Neri. Although it's early spring, things are definitely in high gear for what the summer season's going to bring. There is some things that Chief Bowers did talk about, possibly this summer doing a gun back program again, buy a gun buyback program again, adding surveillance cameras throughout, throughout the community in different areas that could be an asset to, maybe the trouble areas that could be an asset if there's issues in certain areas. There's going to be an increased presence of foot and bike patrols. They're getting additional grant money that over the next two years, through that burn grant, is going to add up to about 700 man-hours over the next two years. They, that is, it does help there, but they're always searching and applying for additional grants because money is definitely needed to do the safety of the citizens and what the city can't afford. Naturally, have our finance meeting after this meeting. Garbage, number one topic with the delinquents once again. And believe me, it's, I know we've had comments at our citizens that, what have we done lately? Well, every day we are doing something. We're listening to concerns. We're listening to different people's perspective of what can be done. We have a list of 10 different things that we want to make sure that we can do legally, can also be compassionate enough for the people that have paid, not to stick more burden on them. It's a fine line, but we are constantly. And we do our due diligence and get this problem solved one way or another. The problem didn't happen overnight, and it's not going to be fixed overnight. But we, as a council, as well as with the administration, we're going to come to a agreement here to get this problem solved. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Gunso?
Thank you, Mr. President. As Mr. Winarsky said, we have our finance committee immediately following this meeting. We will also have Mr. Paul Voitek from the Erie Water Works who does our billing at the meeting and continue to discuss solutions and strategies and hopefully start to implement a plan to reverse the delinquencies. We did receive a legal opinion from our solicitor that must have come late yesterday so we can discuss the issue of the landlord licensing program and its connection to the refuse delinquencies. And we'll be discussing that at our meeting shortly. I also have the Erie Area Council Governments meeting this afternoon. We ended up canceling our meeting last month due to a snowstorm. When you have a council of governments, people are coming from Franklin and Gerard. They don't really want to drive in the snowstorm. So I appreciate and understand their hesitance. And so we'll be meeting today in Lawrence Park, continuing to work on joint collaborative projects amongst the governments of Erie County. A group has contacted me just yesterday that is interested in doing a cleanup of graffiti in our city. So I'm going to work with Jill and look at some park sites that we tend to have a problem with excessive graffiti and volunteers that will be able to come and clean up some of those park areas. So that's a good thing. Hopefully, that means spring's coming. If people want to do some sprucing up and beautifying, we obviously appreciate that. The other issue that keeps coming to council is the, that intermodal railroad project in Harbor Creek. And then Pat Harkins' suggestion about consideration of a city site. I think it might be who of us, Mr. President, to maybe have a study session and invite both develop Erie and also maybe Pat Harkins. I don't know. And just try to discuss what the issues are and, and whether or not we ought to be, as city advocates, getting involved with advocating for the, the development of that site in our city. I, I have heard that there are some limitations with the site that Representative Harkins was suggesting. And that may be reasons why that would not be considered and why we would not want to advocate for that. But I think maybe it's time for us to sit down, have that discussion. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Kwiatowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended the O&amp;E pension meeting and the fire pension meeting. And we'll attend the police meeting. meeting, and will attend a police meeting in about a week. All the pension funds are progressing rather well considering the market conditions. They're in great shape and have further reports as the year goes along. I also attended, along with Councilman Mersky, the Southeast Erie Neighborhood Watch meeting, which was very productive. Those Neighborhood Watches are the core of our community. I also had the pleasure attending the East Erie one at St. Anne's under Father Jerry Priscaro, and Ex-Councilman Schwartz brought up an interesting comment about volunteerism, and one of the things that came out of that meeting was, because of the age of the people in that area, Father Jerry's got a plan going about cutting those people's lawns, helping them shovel. So I think, you know, maybe we can get together as, once in a while, as a councilman to maybe help them out in that area with volunteers, because they're seemingly want to clean up their neighborhood. And that's the secret to Erie's future success, one block at a time. It didn't happen overnight, but we ain't going to clean it up overnight. So I applaud those groups. I will be meeting with CAT TV at 4:30 next week. I'll have my Park and Authority meeting, and we'll have a report next meeting. Concerning the intermodal rail yard, I spent some time this past week with Representative Harkins and also met with some of the Harbor Creek supervisors. I don't know whether we're a good site or not, but I think, as a councilman, I'd love to see that site in the City of Erie. We're set up for it. I think, you know, we have the Bobbott theory where everybody shakes their head and says, well, we can't do, we can't do this. Well, nobody's seen the report. Let's see the report. And I like to get together with, like Councilwoman Kunczo said, let's get active in and see why, or what kind of pitch we have to make to get on the east side. I know for a fact, this city could use the taxes, it could use the jobs, and I'm planning on meeting with Councilman Andre Horton on this issue, too. I think the time for talk is done. You know, we got to start being proactive. We have many of these leaders of community and people of vision that have their own ideas where things would go. Well, let's find out what it would take to bring it here to Erie, and that's going to be my mission in the next couple of months, and I hope the council will join me in that. You know, it's an opportunity to get some business in Erie that we could use. I'm a little disappointed in Mr. Whaley, who left here today before we could answer him, because, you know, we respect his right to talk, but we also respect the right to answer him during our committee reports. He wanted to know what my plan was. You know, he spotted off about a lot of things, about what we didn't do, what we haven't done. This council, I'd like the public to know, is the first council that really took the issue of garbage bills very seriously. It's not going to happen overnight that we're going to come up with a solution. Everybody thinks it's a simple thing, but it's not. When you look at the legalities of many of the problems, there are issues that have to be discussed so we do things right. To just jump in and do it wrong would not be proper. Change for the sake of change is never right. We will come up with a solution. I see about at least three of them out there that I would love to support. As I've said all along, my idea is, and I steadfastly remain that, we should take them to court and, where possible, attach their own personal property. That'd make a great dent into them, you know, not to just have their rental property affected, but they might have their own home up for, you know, up for lean. Let's see, let's see how they react to that, you know. And I call them what they are. They're carpetbaggers, doing business in the city. They're, you know, very untrustworthy. I'd like to thank Mr. Kennedy, who I've known for at least a few years, for having the wisdom to develop in the city. We need more of that. We need more Nick Scots, we need more Tom Kennedys. This is what'll bring the city back. So I'd like to also tell that young lady out there, she may call me at home, and I will gladly answer your questions off the air, because there's so many of them. And any citizen who wants to call me, my number's in the phone book. I'll be glad to answer any question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. In relation to, and a few of us have mentioned, and we've been hearing a lot about the proposed intermodal railway project in Harbor Creek, and also we're hearing a lot about how do we move that into the city. I think we have to, I think we should have dialogue about that, but I think we need to have the right people at the table in that dialogue, and I think it would be probably a kind of us chasing our tails a little bit if we don't have the developers and the Economic Development Corporation and the affiliates that have been working on this project thus far at a table about a legitimate dialogue, because I can guarantee you that many of the options have already been looked at. There's a reason why the site in Harbor Creek has been selected. Again, not advocating for anything out the city greater than anything in the city, but I think, I don't want us to assume that our local in-city, in-the-city proper sites have not been looked at. So I think we need to get the right people at the table to have the right dialogue so that it's effective and it's beneficial and it's full of the right information. Also, Mr. Kwiatowski mentioned it. We'd like to thank, you know, we had an item on the agenda under new business in our enterprise zone loan fund, and we have a group that is willing and has owned some private, owned some property privately on the bayfront and has come up with what seems to be a very tremendous plan that not only does something isolated in Erie, but allows Erie to be a part of this regional thing that's happening and this development of a hotel location there. And, you know, sometimes we get so caught up in, you know, this person's doing it, this person's doing it, and then there's always some, like, in my opinion, light at the end of the tunnel where somebody just does something. And so I appreciate this organization, this group, Mr. Kennedy and all those affiliates working in placing private investment coupled with public support through investment to make, to make our bayfront and our community more rich and add some value to it. So we appreciate that. We don't hear about those stories enough. We get the sensationalized battles over the bayfront, and then you have someone who owns property just going to go and do something in a productive way. So again, that's a wonderful thing. I did attend the water authority meeting after our last session in these chambers. A lot of what I will report on is going to be actually discussed in the caucus, or excuse me, in our finance meeting today with Mr. Voitek being here, but I do want to take a moment to say thank you to Paul, because he's really invested a lot of time outside of his general job description to help us in pulling their solicitor in and sitting with him on time that's not necessarily, although it benefits us all, not necessarily a part of his job description. So I want to take a moment to thank him for that and all the water authority staff and even board members who invested some time and ideas towards helping us with this issue. Also, by way of announcement, March the 29th, there's a summer youth job fair at the Booker T. Washington Center from 1:00 to 4:00. This is for young people aged 15 to 22. The flyer says, "Come dressed to impress," so don't come in jeans and, you know, come in a slightly more professional, although you can dress jeans up, Kaz, I know you know that, slightly more professional attire. There's also going to be some training involved in this event as well, so there's going to be jobs available or vendors or businesses, companies that'll be there. You can bring your resume, bring your information, come in and hopefully help you to find a job this summer. Also, along the same lines, looking to, we're formulating a committee to expand what we did last year with the 10 or 12 young people who participated in the summer work program that was majorally funded by this council, taking some initiative and some forward thinking to take some money that we don't usually use and then actually invest it in the community. And so that project is still going, and committee's being formulated. It's going to be quite, quite a bit expanded this year, so we'll be have more information for council to hear about that and the community to hear about that by the end of the month. Again, you know, I wasn't going to say anything, but I just, for the sake of dialogue, you know, if there is, it is never an intent on my part as a member of this council, a public official, to break any rules or to make anyone feel uncomfortable with the concept of prayer or meditation. The, sometimes, you know, and this is the second time someone's said something to me on these lines, or has made comment about, you know, silent meditation. In closing, the silent part does happen, but sometimes it's good to give you a moment, or give you something to think about during that silent time, and there's nothing wrong with acknowledging those in our community who need and to have our thoughts on them and to have our prayers directed toward them. So, thank you, Mr. President. That's my time.
Thank you very much, Councilman Jones. I attended the JFK Center's Black History Trivia Program, and for the third year in a row, and I hate to say it, that John Haran of the Erie Housing Authority took first place, and he hasn't stopped letting me know by phone or when he sees me, so they maintained the trophy permanently for three consecutive years. Being that he's the board president of Edinburgh University, once again, he stacked the deck with the educators. So, congratulations to John and the Erie Housing Authority. I did meet with John Bosch of Erie, what is it, Erie Downtown Organization, and they are doing quite a bit, and they plan to do quite a bit in the downtown area, including working with the city on special events, bringing more special events into the city. They plan on providing additional security through security cameras. They're working on some grants to make that happen. I will invite Mr. Bosch to our caucus meeting to make a detailed presentation to council at our next caucus meeting. That's all I have. Mrs. Robey? Oh, my, I'm sorry. End of day. End of day.
I just have one thing. The exit conference with the Auditor General's office is going to be on March 18th, and I'll have results from that meeting, next meeting that we have. So, that's all I have.
What time is that?
11, I think it's 11 o'clock. It's 11 o'clock.
Administration?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to thank council for the waive the rules on the resolution to hire the new police officer. That swearing in is tomorrow at 10:30 in Room 500. Our apologies for not getting it on the agenda as, as we should have. So thank you very much. It's important to keep our compliment at the number that we certainly need. Lots of talk in the community about the Color Run that is coming up in August. The City of Erie has been working with the Erie Sports Commission and the folks from the Color Run that I believe are based in Utah. They're capping the run at 10,000 participants. As of yesterday, they had 9,200 some odd number signed up, so hopefully by the end of the week, we will have 10,000 runners registered, and the funding from that event goes to the United Way, which is, of course, celebrating their 100th anniversary this summer. So they'll be the, reaping the benefits of the runners in downtown. I think that's all. Have a great day.
Thank you very much. And now, Mrs. Robey.
City Council adjourns at 10:10. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon.